All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Like, call the meeting order and welcome everyone to Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District thirteen. School board meeting for Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen. Call me your at seven oh two and if you would rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I, Lori, if you would, call the board?
Sure. Nichols?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Landwehr?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Okay, thank you. The mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And moving on to our next item, the agenda approval adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. And if I could have someone make a motion to move the approval of the agenda?
I'll move that forward.
And Lori, this is seconded by Grant. Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The announcements are as follows. March thirtieth through April third, no school spring break. April sixth, Monday, no school grading day. April fourteenth, Tuesday at five P.M., the Subcommittee on Policy meeting in the Superintendent's Conference Room. April fourteenth, Tuesday at seven P.M., a regular school board meeting in the Community Room. April twenty-first, Tuesday, five-thirty, School Board Listening Session in the Family Center. April twenty-first, Tuesday at six P.M., School Board Work Session, the Community Room. And April twenty-eighth, Tuesday at seven P.M., the regular School Board Meeting again in the Community Room. And then to correspondence, Superintendent Kelly, is there any correspondence?
Mister Chair members, there's no correspondence at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to communication to the board, citizens and employee representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. I'm gonna have to count on you guys to tell me if there's anybody there that wants to speak to the board.
No.
No.
No one's here.
Brian was talking about a packed house tonight, so I just wanna make sure. Okay, that's a no. Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. I'd be looking for a motion to move that forward.
I'll move that forward. Second.
I'm sorry, who was that? Okay. And who made the motion and who seconded it, I'm sorry?
Molly did the motion. Laura second.
Okay, thank you. All right. And that's covering the personnel report and the lane changes. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion reports, information items, reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. And Grant, do you wanna start tonight?
Sure. Well, I attended a baby shower for early childhood learning, ECFE. That was here, it was pretty cool. I went to the Highland PTO meeting. Went to the work session, listening session, right before the work session, so that was pretty cool. We had a couple people that showed up. And also, I went to the Reach graduation ceremony, which was really awesome to see a lot of people there participating and see a lot of different cultures and their families show up and just embracing of, you know, what they're doing on the activities with their kids. And, you know, that they're trying to, you know, they're really getting involved with, you know, educating their kids and involved in the studies and stuff and how to succeed and reach for success. I also met with Jenny Arnson, who's the Minneapolis School Board Chair today. It was a pretty, really good, interesting meeting that we had, so that's about it. Next?
My bad. That's a few plus again. Molly, you're supposed to tell me when my lips are moving.
She should've told me before.
I did say thank you, Grant, and then we'll let you go ahead.
Oh, that's okay.
I have nothing to report.
I just got back from the National School Board Association Conference with member Lewis, and it was a fabulous conference. Have a lot to share with all of you. And my focus, just briefly, was on technology and preparing students to be college and career-ready. And I say "and" because that was a big emphasis, that it, we need to go beyond just college-ready, but also career-ready. So, more to come on that later.
Okay, thanks, Ted. Lori?
I attended the listening session last week, and since it's also on the agenda, I'll save the details for later, but I just wanted to thank the parents and Kristen and Nicole and Superintendent Kelly for participating, and it was really, it was good. We had some good discussion. And the work-study, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Molly?
I attended the work session last week and also attended the national conference in Nashville. A lot of the focus, or a lot of the groups that I, sessions that I attended were regarding culture, parent engagement, and the social, emotional needs of the kids. So, I'll be happy to report on that at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have nothing to report at this time. Moving on, we go to Superintendent's Report. Kathy?
Mister Chair members, I also attended the School Board Work-Study Session and the School Board Listening Session, and I wanted to give a special thanks to Member Meyer for the, I wanna call him the St. Patrick's Day chocolate brownie bars that I'm still thinking about. They were delicious. John, you missed out. Other things that were as special, but not as tasty, was I had the Northeast Metro nine sixteen Superintendent Advisory Meeting. We meet quarterly, and that focused on the transformation of the ties organization because the executive director came out and chatted with the superintendents. And then Superintendent Hayes went over the Capital View remodeling and capital projects. And they're down to two options. I'm sure that Member Palmer will tell us more about that as it continues, but I am gonna talk about that tomorrow at Management Team with the directors. They really are moving down the road with the construction projects and what they might cost. But they're down to two options. The principal selection process for Columbia Academy is underway. The first round of interviews was held in this very room last week, and the second round of interviews will be held this Thursday. And representing the board will be Member, or Vice Chair, Landwehr for that. And there's also a community forum at seven-thirty for folks to get to meet the recommended finalists. And then there'll be more things that are going on with that. The, eventually, a recommendation will come to the board in April and who that selected candidate would be. The pre-K-12 administrators met again on staffing and other issues of concern. And then the six 12 administrators packed it up and went over to North Park for a tour. And the purpose of that was not when other people tour from outside the district, but was to really look at facility usage and talk about the pros and cons of some of the facility usage, some of the golden nuggets that North Park has learned along the way. And also, particularly for the Columbia Academy staff administrators, to look at what the learning studio environment looks like and to talk a little bit with North Park also about the personalized learning initiative that will be going on in fifth grade, that will tie things together. So, that was quite a fun afternoon. And the directors, Director Burkes-Hongren and I met with the ESEA Federal Programs Grants to discuss how they factor into next year's budgets, so when we report out to you on next year's budgets, we have that factored in, as well as the staffing. We had a couple sad things happening in the district the last few days, and so I attended the funeral of one of our high school employees' spouse, and then, as well as Principal Ford, represented the district at a funeral of another employee's adult son who passed. So, our sympathy and support go out to both of those families. The WMAP continues to evolve, and we had, I attended the WMAP three-point-O Subcommittee at Fair Crystal just yesterday. And the work of the Subcommittee is to make recommendations to the Joint Powers Board on possible organizational opportunities for the future. And it's my understanding that the Joint Powers Board is having a work-study session on Thursday, and superintendents are invited to attend, and some of these recommendations will be discussed in their entirety at that session. I'll only be able to stay for a while because we have the candidate forum in the evening, but I will go for the top of the evening on that. Director Bill Hongren and I had a working lunch today with the City of Columbia Heights' Mayor and City Manager. And we discussed issues of mutual concern and benefit, but we, the city reported out that they are so glad they entered into the gym project with us, that it's getting usage, that they're very, very happy, and it's going better than they'd ever could expected. And they were really over-the-moon happy about their new library project. And they were talking about all the stuff that was gonna go on with that, and it was really fun to just see them all about that. And we are discussing some parking issues up here, and I think that was it, but it was just great, and I wanted to thank again the mayor for their support of the students as they went on their New York trip. And that really concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Next up is a Listening Session update. The board will present with an update on the Listening Session. The presenters I have listed here, Member Meyer, Member Nichols, Nicole Halby, and Brian Hennickens.
Thank you, Chair Larkin. I'm trying to look at your seat where you would be while I'm speaking. And members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. It's our pleasure to be here this evening, and maybe, I don't know if Member Nichols and Meyer would like to say something about what a great Listening Session was, and then Director Hennickens is here and myself to respond to some of the issues and some of the exciting things that we wanna share. Did you wanna say a few words, otherwise we can go right in?
Just again, just to thank everybody for participating and for the parents to come. It really was, we did have some really good discussion about parent engagement and communication and some opportunities to hopefully get parent engagement to be more reflective of our student bodies and maybe some technology opportunities for communication. And it was a really good discussion. Actually, we kinda ran out of time. We could've continued on, but I was really glad, I was really glad that the parents came, and it was really nice, and thank you for your time as well.
I'll just go with ditto.
So, we had two lovely women who live in the community, a mother from Valley View and a mother from Highland, came to the Listening Session last week and shared with us, as Member Meyer said, a PTO member at Valley View wanting to be more inclusive, get all of our members of our community, whether they're EL families, immigrants, African-American, Latino, involved more in the PTO. And we talked about some good ideas that might assist that, and just really talking about what would enhance experience for parents for communication and around engagement. So, we'll begin with that. Sure. So, this is just snapshot. If you recall, I've come before, and we've talked about family engagement and what is available on the website for parents. We talked about Reach, which Member Nichols just talked about, the graduation. That was so exciting. It was all three elementaries, Highland, North Park, and Valley View, all participating together at Valley View, and it was a great turnout. They were really pleased to see the board represented. Admin was represented very well, so it was really exciting. But, so I won't go over the whole page, but I just wanted to show this on the screen and remind you that we do have a tab at the top that says Families, and different things on the family website that they can access. And Brian will talk a little bit more about School View and the Parent Portal, 'cause that was one of the questions too, from the parent at Highland.
All right, thanks, Nicole. So, just to start, you know, as far as the technology tools, some of the key ones that we're using, we do have our district website. Nicole just kinda talked about that from a family piece. We do Facebook and Twitter as a district level, and we do have some of the buildings that are also engaged in varying ways. School View, of course, is our parent portal. Blackboard Connect Five is our mass notification system, whether it be emergency, whether it be specific building events going on. That does also include voice mails, emails, so there's those components there. Moodle and Schoology are learning management systems, and there's a communication capabilities through those tools. And then we use Remind One-O-One as a text message tool. And again, it's that, Remind One-O-One's not widespread. Moodle and Schoology, Moodle is just at the high school. Its strength is in the science and math department. Schoology is what we're implementing right now at the middle school. Very, very widespread with our new initiative, personalized learning initiative. So, as we move that initiative out, we'll see strength and growth in a lot of these areas because they're key components of the initiative. I just wanted to take a couple screenshots and talk about this, just because I think there's, people don't know actually all that is really there. You know, there, within School View, our parent portal, there's alert setting capability. It mainly focuses attendance. Of course, on the other side, you see attendance there. You can see daily attendance, grades, report card, today's schedule, as well as the full year's schedule. And a lot of these things, you look at them and you're like, well, that's great for my middle and high school student, but what about my elementary student? And I'll get to that. Transcripts, test history, I think test history is a big thing. I mean, you can see all of the test history in there. It's color-coded, and I have examples of that. Student information, just, you know, the information about your students that you have in the district. Of course, behavior, we wanna know that. Transportation is important for some that aren't in, within the walk zone, and knowing what that transportation, they don't have to worry about the card, though we still send that. The information is there, and of course, the health records. One of the conversations was around, you know, assignments, and what did we get on those assignments? So, I pulled this right out of School View, which is assignments in the one column, the due date, the score, and the total possible. And you can see the, on the way left-hand side, the course definitions are what that actually is. And again, you know, you're looking at this, and this is a pre-AP geography nine o'clock course, so, and this is a student that does very well as well. So, this, I just pulled this this morning, actually, this is a screenshot. So, we definitely, the conversation was whether we had this capability or not. Obviously, we do. It's built in there. One of the things is consistency, obviously, is always something that's a challenge because of time. Things are time-intensive. We're talking about a lot of different systems. When I talk about Moodle, learning management system, student information system, and School View, and that information that's there, and then, of course, Schoology as well. So, and so I think a big thing, and I'll say it at the end again, is linking those systems together, and that is something we're actively working on. This is just a screenshot of the test session. Again, this was a very smart student. Blues and greens are good. This is a, there's a calendaring function in there as well, and it's something that we don't utilize to the strength of what the tool is within School View. It's something that we're working on expanding and making sure that it's right. I mean, as you can see, you can color-coordinate it, you can add other calendars into it, so you could add your personal calendar into there, so when you log into School View, you can see those things. And again, it's that disconnect between our learning management systems and our student information system, and that link that I'm gonna keep saying, we're working on that. We do have an active group that's working on creating that. And that's not just those two systems, it's more, here's our student information system, and how can we create something that's more universal-friendly for getting, you know, so if you're not Schoology or Moodle, what about these other systems? So, something we're working on. This is progress monitoring. I just kinda wanna show you these components because this is exciting stuff. You know, where your trend line is, where you wanna be, you know, and here's your scores, and where is your student scoring? So, you can see there, you know, they're on the trend line, they bumped down, what happened? You can start looking at things, you know, with that student in particular. So, this is, this is a progress monitoring specifically for a student in the personalized learning plan within our, within our system, our current student information system. So, this is some exciting stuff, and this is things that we're rolling out now. And, you know, it'll be, it's a slow go because it takes time. It takes time to build this all out.
Can I just add something in? The urban liaisons have been trained by Brian's staff and are working with the families. When they do some home visits, they work with them at home, show them how to log in through School View. I know Yvonne Padilla for Middle School, and the high school had a huge group of parents in, and they literally went through and navigated to show them hands-on how they can access.
And I think one of the other questions was, does this fit into the technology plan? And my answer would be, of course it does. There's two key components we've been talking about here, relative and authentic student learning. In that component is that online piece, bringing it relevant to today's standards as far as 21st century learning. So, at the top right in the green, we talk about our access through tools, including Moodle and Schoology. And so, there's that component there. And then, of course, there's the whole, you know, area of strategy of connected and engaged families. So, there's that whole component as well. And then that component is that one portal access to digital programs for parents and students. So, again, that ties back to our work that we're doing now, trying to link those systems together, because those learning management systems are very, very important for us with our personalized learning initiative, and really, any one-to-one initiative, they're critical. And so, it's making sure that the teachers, yes, they're building information within those systems, but we have to get that linked. Because right now, a parent can log into Schoology and they can get that information, but then they gotta log into School View to get this other information. So, again, it's about bringing it together, and it takes time, but that's something we're actively working on. So, again, I said, the next steps are linking learning management systems. And with our parent notification system, something we just did, which was missing, was being able to put attachments to our emails, so we could just cut and paste text in. So, we recently put that on. I know that Michelle was very excited about that, so she could send out her newsletter as an attachment to email to the families at Highland. So, that's something that we've actively just done. And on this page is just, it's an icon, so, and just a message that the School View application is a web-friendly, phone slash iPad tablet-friendly-built system. And, yeah, you don't go to the App Store and download it, but you just go to the login page and save it to your, shortcut to your home screen. You can do it through Safari, save it's an iPad, add to home screen, and this is the icon that you get, and it just pops the login screen right away, and you log in, and away you go, because it's a touch-friendly environment. So, it's definitely, it's there, it's a great tool. And I think the biggest thing is connecting those systems and then being more consistent with it, which, again, through that personalized learning initiative is a focus for us.
And one suggestion, we just met on our final, final, final of the calendar for the 15-16, after the board approved it. We're going over details, making sure all the principals and their secretaries have gotten the information in. And the PTO member from Valley View had commented on the calendar in different languages, and I said, well, we've always had a two-page that's gone out in Spanish, but this year we're going to do Somali and Arabic as well on the two-page. So, responded to her saying, you know, we have to reach out and get everybody involved that needs to get involved, and we've already had a Somali gentleman look at it, and he was very excited that he was gonna be able to see his son's schedule on the calendar. So, very, it was a very nice Listening Session, and we appreciate all the families and community members coming in.
Any questions or comments?
I just had a comment. Thank you both for, you just, you answered the questions. Thanks for your update. You addressed the concerns very well. And this, the application, the technology looks really cool, so thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you.
I just wanna say, this is all in line with what I've just learned at the National School Board Association, so thank you very much, definitely on the right track. And I think there is an app to link learning systems that I learned about as well, so it's definitely in line with what the, it seems that the national push has been for integrating technology with communications to families. So, great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I wanna thank you both too, because, you know, it's really cool that you guys investigated right after the Listening Session, and communication is such a big part of customer service these days, you know, especially with school districts. Was there a part, though, I'll ask Brian on this one, with like, missing assignments or updating on that, like getting back to parents on the School View?
Obviously, you know, we can list assignments in there, and it can show in there. I picked a very good student, so they, they had all of their assignments in, and they did very well, ten out of tens or fifty out of fifty or fifty-two out of fifty-five. But it also show in there that missing assignments. And I think, again, that comes back to consistency with working with the teachers on getting that information in there. But I think an even broader component of that, again, is linking those learning management systems together, because if a teacher's building their classroom curriculum into that learning management system to fit within that personalized learning initiative, we don't wanna have to build, have them build it twice. So, part of it is work on us, again, that work to link those systems, to get that in there, so that, I mean, time is of the, is a hot commodity, I mean, it's, there just isn't enough. So, we need to make sure that, you know, we're doing our due diligence to work as hard as we can to make it easier for them. So, it's a two-pronged thing that we approach and we need to take, is becoming more consistent. I think, again, with that personalized learning initiative, we'll get there, but also make it, make it more, more friendly ecosystem for everyone, not just the parents, but for the teachers too.
I agree with that totally assessment. I also have a, are our teachers trained on, you know, using the system so that they can, like, keep them updated and all that? So, I think that was a kind of a, it's a big issue, with the parents talked about it at the Listening Session, you know, that, you know, the connection, you can have these tools, which is great, you know, but getting people to use the tools is a different story. So, you know, it's just making sure that our teachers are trained to use those, so...
Yeah, it's a critical piece, for sure, and all of our new teachers coming in, our, are trained. And I'm a broken record when I say this, but I think as we move forward with, you know, more, wider, larger-scale approach to making sure that everybody's on the same level through, through, again, the initiative, maybe the personalized learning initiative, but other initiatives too, creating college and career-ready students and, you know, other initiatives we have, making sure that we're tracking that. I think we'll see a lot more of that. You know, we have our June PD days coming up again, and that's something that's not too old for us. I mean, we just started that a couple years ago, and I think we'll see more success there that way.
All right, again, thank you both. Yeah, that's awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Thank you, Brian and Nicole. Next up on the agenda is the health insurance bid. Board will be presented with information on the health insurance bid, and Bill Hongren will be providing us with the information. Hi, Bill.
Yeah, hi, John. Remember the school board, Superintendent Kelly? As soon as I find where this is on here. I didn't, I don't see it. Oh, I'm sorry. Then I need to put it up. Sorry about that. Okay. We talked, I believe, probably about a month ago at a work session about the new law, the HITA law, where now school districts are required to bid themselves for health insurance. Yeah, but for health insurance for our employees. In the past, we are part of a co-op, and they, they went out every couple years, and they bid on our behalf. But now, we have to do it ourselves. So, and I talked to you that mainly, the main, the main decision is made by our insurance committee, which is really, the balance of that is with our teachers. And the board doesn't have a lot of input. But when it comes, it comes down, I do need you to accept the, the new contract with whatever vendor we go with. So tonight, I'll show you the bits of, and the information we went through with the insurance committee and how it came to the decision that we did. And we're almost done with the process, we're not quite there. So again, we met with our insurance company, insurance committee a week ago. Now, we did receive six bids on our insurance, which is really every player out there. So we were very pleased with the numbers that came in for our employees. So we had preferred one, Health Partners, Blue Cross, Bush Shield. I missed one here. Preferred one, Medica, Peep. And then we also had self-funded responses from Health Partners, Blue Cross and Preferred One. Blue Cross, Medicare, I mean, Medica and Health Partners were our most competitive, fully insured responses that really matched the current plans that we have for our employees. And Preferred One is the most competitive self-funded response that we received. The end, the really good news is that all of the responses that we received entail an immediate rate decrease from where we are right now. So that was very good news. Okay, when we look at our Blue Cross or our South Central Service Cooperative, it's really Blue Cross that works through those. So when I talk about the South Service, Service Cooperative, it really is a Blue Cross product. So we look at keeping the exact same offerings for the district. And we're looking at a first year 2% decrease in our, in our premiums. And then we have a guarantee in the second year not to exceed 5%, which is, we usually don't get any type of guarantee like that at all. So we're very pleased with that. There was an option to go to 100% Alina network, which would save us 7%. The committee really felt not to go down this, this road because we have a lot of employees in many, many places. And a little, you know, pretty inconvenient to have to go to an Alina clinic, especially when we look at retirees that are really all over the nation. So they kind of steered away from that, especially since we saw a decrease no matter what. A couple of things we have to do though, we have to, of course, participate with the South Service Cooperative. Would require us to continue with our joint powers agreement with them. And then participation also lets us continue with our wellness offerings. We have a small wellness program we run through our, really, well, we have a wellness committee that takes care of that. They also have some other co-op purchasing types of things. We don't really use them for that since we have the ties that we work through with those types of things. But there are some other joint purchasing products through the co-op. Medica, now Medica gave us a larger decrease the first year, which is, actually is quite a bit. But of course, the cap is quite a bit more the second year. Committee was pretty concerned to drop it 8% and then be capped at nine and a half, thinking that the third year we would kind of get hit. So as we go through this, you'll see that really are steering to stay with that central service cooperative, South Central Service Cooperative. We see a lot less risk in that third year. Again, and this network is with the Fairview system. Preferred One also keep our plans, again, a 2% decrease the first year. And of course, it's with the Fairview care system. Our Health Partners, actually, we saw a relatively large decrease again for the first year of 7%. But again, that cap way up the second year at 9%. Give you an idea of the rates that we pay right now in our, our co-pay plan. Single rates are, you know, $750. In our high deductible plan, our VBA plans, you see the single of $603. When we compare, compare that to the new rates with the South Central Service Cooperative, you see a small, we're seeing a small decrease with that 2% from, you know, 750 down to 737. And then our de-ecoplan from what, 603 down to 591. So it's not a huge decrease, but it is a decrease when really trend for health insurance is really about 9% increase on a yearly basis. So we're very pleased with those kind of numbers that came in. Okay, again, Blue Cross also gave us a bid themselves besides going through the co-op, but really the numbers were exactly the same. So you see a 2% decrease here and a 5% cap on the second year. So really 2.8% is our worst case scenario over a two-year period. And again, you can see the rates here. I did, I did include this in your board packet, so you can, you can study that a little more in depth if you'd like to. Okay, Medica again, like I said, we have a decrease of 8% and then a renewal of nine and a half. You can see, you know, between the 2% and the 8%, it is different, but when we get all done, there's not much difference of the change. Again, here's the rates for Health Partners. Again, we're seeing a decrease in the first year and that relatively large gap in the second year. That's a 7% decrease and a 9%. So looking at about a 1.4% increase over the two-year period. I know it gets to be a lot of numbers. If you have any questions, let me know. But I'm going to try to move it relatively quickly. Now, Health Partners, again, like I said, there's a 7% decrease there with a 1% overall two-year period for Health Partners. Now here's our rates for Preferred One. Preferred One is a self-funded insurance. When we went ahead and put the bids out, we, we went ahead and then we're going to accept any type of, of bid that we received. And this, and we actually got self-funded through some other, other companies too, but they were higher. Just to give you an idea, and then we, I want to talk a little bit about, you know, the goods and the pros and the cons when we look at about a self-funded plan. Well, again, the self-funded plan pretty much matched our plan designs with a 2% on the first year. Now advantages, of course, of a self-insured program, any type of a decrease savings. We were able to keep the same plans, but all, any type of gain that happens in the, in a self-insured plan, actually, those gains stay with the district. So we have those funds in future years to help control our, our costs going forward. Okay, the, the, when we look at the plans, there's an aggregate benefit value protection for employee, for all employees applied to the self-funded plan, plans. And we have a long-term cost control. So we can really look ahead, we can control better what our increases would be. Of course, it completely depends upon the type of claims that we'd have in, in that particular year. But we, we do have a little better, better control. But of course, disadvantages, there definitely is, is greater risk. So when we see, if we had a year like we had about five years ago, where we had quite a few claims and we actually had a pretty good bump in our insurance rates at that time of almost 10%. Here, if we would run short, the district would actually have to kick the funds in temporarily to cash flow that plan. And we'd have to increase the, next year to make sure we replace all the, all the premium that we were short. So this, that definitely is the, you know, the size of our district, we're kind of right in that bubble. The other real disadvantage when we look at this too, is you would come out of a co-op, we've been in very, for a lot of years. And we have a lot of equity built up into that co-op and we would lose that. We never get those funds back, they would stay with the co-op. Anyway, so we see a lot of variance in our claims and that's all our risk. So that's definitely a disadvantage of a self-insure, self-insure. Talking about a couple of terms you run across in a self-insured plan, you know, the stop-loss insurance. So what happens, we pay the claims up to a certain point. So if, most of the time it's at about $500,000. So if a particular employee would get, have a claim of over $500,000, then there's insurance that kicks in and would cover us for that. But anything under that $500,000, we've got to pay out of the premiums that we collect from all our employees. Of course, there's two different kinds, there's the aggregate and this, and then just specific stop-loss. Stop-loss is more of a, I mean, specific is what I kind of explained, one person would hit. And aggregate is if we, the whole group hits at that point. Okay, let's move on to the premium projection analysis. You know, the cap, the cap offered by the South Service Cooperative is not a guarantee second year rate, it actually could be less. One thing to remember with the co-op. Our self-funded proposal from Preferred One is 10 to 15% lower than other self-funded responses. And that was one, another thing that we were kind of nervous about, since the other self-funded actually showed us some increases that we really felt that this, this decrease of 10% that first year would really put us in some higher risk than we thought we really would want to handle. So that's kind of why we steered away from the self-funded, at least for this point. And remember, we will be bidding this now every two years and we will see a self-funded bid every two years. So we can actually revisit this on a, on a regular basis. Okay, the second year renewal guaranteed by Medica and Health Partners may not be enough, enough savings to mitigate the disruption in the changing plans of our, of our, of our carriers. So our employees are used to using a certain plan for many, many years now. And by changing to one of these other vendors, it changes how they pay their claims. We have to use a different admin. We want to just use select account. Select account is actually part of Blue Cross. So it'd have to be a different, a different administrator. And we really felt the small savings that we saw really wasn't going to be enough for the disruption with our employees. We're only looking at about a 1% difference with no guarantees in that third year. Okay, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, through the South Service Cooperative, harvest the least impact to our current district offerings. And another thing to remember too, is that the actual insurance and the way it pays out, Medica, even though they matched our plans, the actual what they pay for isn't necessarily 100% the same as what Blue Cross paid for. Especially when it comes to the drug coverages. So certain formularies were in different categories with different, with a different. So it, it would affect it, some of our employees a bigger way than others. So they really wanted to stay away also from that and just kind of keep the thing on an even keel. Okay, Preferred One response is clearly the most competitive of the self-funded, but again, because the other self-funded were so much higher, we really felt that they maybe missed something and we weren't, we don't want to go risk dropping that 2% and be in trouble. Okay, we also got a response from a Peep. That's the Public Employer Insurance Plan, which the state of Minnesota follows and which is now, we have to get a bid from Peep every time. The rest is whoever comes, but Peep has to, has to participate. But here you can see, we saw actually relatively large increases. And not only did we see large increases in the premiums, these, they're deductible is the way this works. It's a tiered plan, so depending what doctor you went to, actually was a different cost depending where you wanted to go. So we definitely didn't, did not decide to go with Peep at this point, at this time. So that was kind of a real quick go-through. I guess the bottom line is, the insurance company, the insurance committee really felt they wanted to stay with the South Service Cooperative because of less disruption for our employees. And we're also seeing a 2% increase there in the first year. And actually, we've gone back to them, we haven't got a response yet. There's actually a 15-day waiting period by the time we get the bids and that we can actually sign a contract with them. And in that time period, we can actually negotiate a little bit. So we've actually asked them, instead of seeing a decrease and trying to keep premiums flat for people, let's say, give us a zero and then cap the second year at 3% instead of the 5%. So it'd be the same over the two years, maybe it would just go along the same. So we'll see, we're hoping that they respond to that in some way. But I'll give you more information as that comes in. We'll get that pretty soon. So, any questions?
Can you explain what equity we have in the cooperative? How, how does that work?
What happens was every year we, we figure, you know, they say, this is really what the premiums you need to cover the claims for your people. And what happens is, on a year-to-year basis, usually we pay in a little bit more in claims, I mean, a little more in premium than we actually use in claims. So there's a little, there's a little leftover, okay? And then they base, they look at the next year, say, well, you, you know, depending what we have and what our claims are, we might use a little of that, we might not use a little bit of it. But there's always a few hundred thousand dollars sitting in there. Okay? But we don't have any access to get that back if we would stop using the co-op.
I see.
So it's, I mean, it's not a huge number, but again, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars is, is a lot of money. So that is an investment. Whenever, anytime in the future, we decide not to continue with the co-op, we would lose that. Whatever that amount is at the time. And it varies every year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sorry for the dry, dry information.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep, thank you.
Next up is board topics.
I just have an observation, one, one thing I noticed with the, the personnel report, it was tonight, it was coaches for the spring season, which has already started. So I guess I would like to see if we could have those personnel issues come up before the season starts in case there's concerns.
Anybody else have any topics? Okay, going once, going twice. All right, if not, we will adjourn the meeting at, I have 7:47 on my computer here. Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everybody.